I'm going to call to order this business meeting of the Borough Council for the Borough of Gettysburg, Monday, July 14th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. I do not have any opening remarks. We will start with a moment of silence and a pledge, please. Pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. An executive session was conducted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg immediately following the adjournment of its monthly work session public meeting held on June 23rd, 2025, consistent with Section 708A-1 and Section 708A-5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business public meeting, consistent with Section 708A-1 and Section 708A-5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment appointment, the terms and conditions of employment of current or prospective borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or confidentiality protected by law. At this time, I would take a motion to approve the July 14th, 2025 agenda as presented.
So moved.
Matt, I'd like to see if we can table the motion under parking until we've had more time to hear from residents about that issue on Hillcrest Place.
So you are moving to table the agenda item that is under the Parking Department, the only motion under the Parking Department on tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Ms. Stoll, could you please call a rule, call vote?
Mr. Bales?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Nay.
All right, so that motion passes. We will amend tonight's agenda to table the issues surrounding the parking ordinance changes on Hillcrest.
I have a question about that. What would the process then look like? Because I did review the opposition, there was a lot of signatures that were opposed with that neighborhood.
I'm not really sure. You know, we have very, very full agendas for the next six months. I'm willing to put maybe 10 minutes into a parking about a minor discussion, a minor change to the parking ordinance, maybe 10 minutes. We have so much business to cover in the next six months.
Would the residents, would they be allowed to speak tonight?
We won't be discussing it on the agenda if we just tabled it, so no.
So they could wait until the end of the meeting?
Sure. All right, I would take a motion to approve the July 14th, 2025 agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. I am a nay. I take a motion to approve minutes of the council business meeting for June 9th, 2025, and council work session minutes of June 23rd, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections, omissions, or additions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we will start this next section. This will be our first public comment section for the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. Please note, the parking changes on Hillcrest are no longer on tonight's agenda. If you do wish to speak on that subject, you'll need to wait till the end of the meeting. Please use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Please state your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment? Last call? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to current and old business. We'll start this evening with the Planning Department and Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided electronically, relatively short. The Planning Commission will be meeting in July to discuss the Baltimore Streets, 340 Baltimore Streets subdivision land development plan for a modification. Otherwise, the big pressing issue would be the comprehensive, not comprehensive, sorry, rezoning effort. That will be the next meeting at the workshop meeting scheduled for the 28th. I'm not going to be in attendance, but Troy Truax with Michael Baker International will be giving a presentation and discussing the nuts and bolts of the process that was taken with the initial working group and then the draft document that's been created by the Planning Commission. We will be having additional meetings. We have at least one scheduled in August. The goal is, I think, to have two. If, I guess, there's a way to schedule that before the workshop meeting, we can do so. Otherwise, we'll be meeting with the Planning Commission on the 21st, and we'll be getting some times when they would be available to come in and meet with the council. But otherwise, that's the conclusion of my report. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to Mrs. English and the Historic and Environmental Preservation.
Thank you. My report is in your folder. This Saturday, we will be representing the borough at the farmer's market for the sustainability and homesteading market. We will have some recycling bins there that are available to borough residents. They are free if you are a borough resident. That is Saturday, July 19th, from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. The Gettysburg stormwater bills went out. I just want to remind everyone that it's a half-year billing cycle, so that will be July 1st through December 31st, 2025, so that would be half of your bill that would be due, that you have to pay within the timeframes that are on that bill stub. And the new bills, because we're changing from the fiscal to a calendar year billing, so the new full-year bills will go out on January 1st. So you're not getting billed extra or twice, but please be aware, you should be receiving those bills in those timeframes. If you have any questions, shoot me an email or give me a call, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, so I have a question. This might be directed towards the solicitor or maybe Mr. Whitmore. So tonight's agenda is organized a little differently with the administrative approval agenda, items listed out. What is the intent of this addition to the agenda? Are we intended to, I mean, there's no motions associated with it, so is this just for our informational purposes? Do we read them to enter them into the record? What is the purpose of them being on the agenda in this manner?
I'll talk about the legal matters, but I think the intent of why they're there is probably better suited for you, so I defer, John.
Yes, so this is just providing information to council regarding the administrative approvals that have occurred. It's informational purposes first and foremost. The administrative approvals are provided in the Historic Districts chapter of the codified ordinances. The provisions allow for minor projects, so those are ones where you're replacing materials with the exact same materials, making allowance for those to be administratively approved. This is, we've had some discussion with the Historic Architecture Review Board regarding administrative approvals, and staff wants to make sure you're aware of the approvals that are being made in accordance with the ordinance.
And they're putting those under a consent agenda.
Yeah.
Chair Stone redesigned the process for review for major projects, consent agenda, and then administrative review.
That said, there is no legal action or authorization required of Borough Council. I would treat the additions, I think, comporting with what Mr. Whitmore indicated, just as a matter of notification. You do not need to acknowledge them. You do not need to take any action with regards to those because they've already been administratively approved.
And the allocation of these applications to these three different agenda, the consent agenda, the administrative approval, and the major projects, is that an express responsibility or power of the Chair of HARB, or is that something that would typically be handled by our staff?
As for previous conventions, I'm not quite sure how the board has handled that. Generally, the idea with the consent agenda is for projects that are commonly good and everyone can recognize the good, just to make the meeting more, I guess, time-saving. We've just had, like I said, we've had a request from the Chair. We're trying to work with the board to be able to provide them with, I guess, the notification to you that they would like to see. But in terms of the changes, typically that would be, typically it would be coming from the board either in the form of policy bylaws or some sort of ordinance actually establishing how the board would operate. But it's, we're not at a stage with the Historic Architecture Review Board to have updated bylaws, and that would be something we would be in discussions over the next coming years to get the board modernized for not only their processes, but also the design guide and the overall ordinance.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. English? All right, so I think that would take us into the motions. Now, based on our discussions last month, staff has taken the extra measure of separating each of the COAs into its own discreet motion, which is going to allow us to more nimbly address any issues that come to light with any of these approvals or denials. Would anybody care to start making those motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250039, major project, 312 North Stratton Street, George and Christina Bolton, for the installation of a mini-split on the side of their building.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Mr. Bales first. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250045, major project, 44 West High Street, Rosemary Mager, for the replacement of a rear fence and to repair the rear wood steps and a front porch railing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250041, major project, 116 York Street, Kevin Koontz, for the enclosure of the rear porch to include a new window and roofing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. 106 North Washington Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250042, major project, 106 North Washington Street, Patriot Rail Company, for the extension of the new train shed canopy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. 606 York Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250044, major project, 606 York Street, Trone Family Trust, for the painting of all four sides of the main structure, stucco sides, and brick front.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 25 Steinware Avenue.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250026, major project, 25 Steinware Avenue, Cross Cannon Studio LLC, for the replacement of the original lap siding with larger lap vinyl siding in a wide profile, subject to the condition that if the original siding is exposed and in good condition, that it could be restored.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Ms. Lawson. All those, is there any discussion?
I guess I just have a question.
Please.
When does the condition of the original siding get determined? How long does the Cross Cannon Studios, how long would they have to wait? What is the process of that?
Their permit's good for one year.
Okay.
For the land use. The COAs don't expire, so as long as they make some type of forward motion within that year, we can make that determination. If the permit expires, then they would have to reapply for their land use.
Okay.
Unless you have something else to add, John.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. 461 Baltimore.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for the COA-250037, major project, 461 Baltimore Street, Frederick Fowler, for the installation of a 96 square foot, eight-foot by 12-foot prefabricated, single-story shed in a rear parking lot space.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 432 South Washington.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250037, major project, 461 Baltimore Street. Nope, I think I'm on the wrong one.
I'm sorry, 432 South Washington.
Yep. Motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250077, major project, 432 South Washington Street, Adams County Habitat for Humanity, for the construction of a single-family home with two over two simulated divided light windows.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 402 York Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250043, major project, 402 York Street, Giovanni Cacusa, for the enclosure of the front porch, for the dining area, the removal of the eager store and replacement with a window, and the restoration of the front porch steps, allowing access to the stairs and walkway at 412 York Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is that a typo, or is it actually 412 and 402?
Good catch.
I was going to ask that in fact.
There are two buildings there. We have the main building and the one next door, but I would have to verify the two addresses, but there should be, they are not the same address.
They are not the same address.
I have that as 402 in the agenda for the HARB.
So this is La Bella.
Yeah, and that should be the main restaurant building.
And so 402 is the building on the corner, and 412 is the building they amended next door.
Yes.
They're purchasing, got it, I see it, 412.
Well, they did several years ago, and they added it as an addition.
Got it. Thank you.
That was a good catch. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 100 York Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the HARB recommendation for COA-250036, major project, 100 York Street, Stone Home LLC, for the replacement of two wood panel garage doors with two raised panel steel doors with two rows of glass panels conditioned upon the submission of a garage door cut sheet by the applicant prior to ordering.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any further questions for Mrs. English? All right, I know that's a trifle more work for the staff to do it that way and for poor Mr. Eastman here, but thank you all for putting work into separating out those motions. I think that's going to be a more, less efficient but more thorough way of doing this in the future. Thank you. All right, that'll take us to the Parking Department. Ms. Fissell.
You should all have my report. I have the comparisons from 2024 to 2025 there, as usual, for the tickets, the permits, the pay-by-phone, and I would just like to say that we were able to help nine people parking with the power outages with their parking in the parking garage, so that was helpful for them. And the police have helped us with bagging for church service on Sundays, so they just started that this past weekend, and I didn't hear how it went or bad or good, so no news is good news, I guess. And there were 17 quarterly permits for the LPPs, so they are increasing in popularity. And I have the charts and graphs there, and that's all.
I'd like to touch on both of the things you just brought up. First, while much of the county was suffering a pretty massive power outage and people were left without air conditioning during a potentially deadly heat wave, it came to our attention that many of the hotels here in town were offering discounted rates to folks in Adams County who didn't have power. Some were even extending those invitations as pet-friendly. It's really a pretty amazing example of community supporting each other, and a woman I know locally brought it to my attention that the Hotel Gettysburg was offering discounted rates, and she inquired with me whether it was possible for the borough to give a break to folks fleeing the heat on the parking permits for the parking garage. People were intending, or, you know, at that moment, it looked like people could be staying for two, three, four nights, and they're paying pretty high rates for the hotel, and so it was asked if the borough could do anything to help discount those overnight rates in the garage. And I called back up, and in between hearings at the magistrate's office, she was able to get that done for the people in this community, and I just want to say thank you for acting quickly and getting that out there for people to take advantage of. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, secondly, I want to thank Sergeant Evans, our officer in charge, for indeed extending a spirit of cooperation to the Parking Department to help with the bagging of those meters for the overnight spaces in front of the churches. It has been confusing and awkward to have those meters bagged at 7:00 p.m. on Saturday nights and then not enforced for five hours. I think it causes confusion for many people. Your willingness to cooperate is value-added for the people that use our downtown, so thank you for your assistance in that matter, and thank you for working with the Police Department. We do not now have any motions under parking. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fissell before we move on? All right, thank you. So that's going to take us to Public Works.
Good evening. My report should be in your folder. Couple highlights on my report. Street line painting is coming up, most likely the beginning of August, where we'll be painting the street line lines, the yellow lines and the crosswalk lines and the parking stall lines all around town. Weather pending, hopefully first or second week in August, try to get it done before school starts. We do have two more agility projects coming up in the future here, next month, end of this month, next month, and we are working on some weed control on the face of curbs along the streets, trying to stop the weeds from getting so high. That's all I have to highlight.
All right. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Harbaugh? Well, I do. Remember Carr mentioned last summer that it seems like some of the planter baskets mounted on the poles are kind of getting lower over time, and this year, it seems like maybe they're lower than ever before. And today, when I was walking to work, I was noticing on the north side of Chambersburg Street, they're all very low, and one is at about three and a half feet. Is it possible your team might have time to kind of check those and make sure that they're at sufficient heights?
Yeah, we can, and I guess we maybe should adjust this with the garden club because they're the ones that install them. They have their greenhouse come in and install them. Then what they normally do is they have a six-foot ladder, they set them on top of a six-foot ladder, and you fasten them because they're so heavy to hold.
Yeah.
I don't know how they did them this year. I wasn't present when they did them, so, but I'll check it out and see what we can.
Yeah, there's a number of them that are at about chin level for me.
Okay.
And I am not a tall person.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for Robbie before we move on? All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to the engineer, Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening, council. There is quite a bit, again, on my engineer's report, six pages long, so I'll try to get through it real quickly. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions about any of it. On the first page, I gave you an update on the racehorse alley parking garage maintenance. The materials have been ordered, they're going to start work this week. They're waiting for the materials for the steps, so stay tuned for an update on that next month. Bream Alley Channel wall replacement, that's associated with the GMA project. They're still working on material procurement, so we were hoping that that was going to be starting this month, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen at this point. I don't have a whole lot of control over it, so I'll keep giving you an update as I know more. I gave you an update on the 2025 CDBG curb ramp project that's using the FY 2023 money. We finished the design, submitted everything to the county for use of CDBG funds, they have approved it. for use of CDBG funds. They've approved it. The projects are live on Penn bid. So we'll be opening bids and hopefully presenting you guys good bids at your meeting next month for approval. On the next page, I give you an update on the channel wall assessment. We did have a kickoff meeting on that first priority area from Carlisle to Gilliland and started the survey. The big lift there is all of the deed research. We'll be getting hold of the solicitor's office here within the next couple of weeks to kind of go over the history of that whole ownership or easement issue that we've been talking about. So we have kicked off that project. The next page is an update on the welcome center. And I believe Jill might have more on this later from her standpoint. But from CS Davidson's standpoint, we're involved with two things. It's the land development plan. We did revise the land development plan, submitted that to the planning department. That's on a July planning commission meeting just for those updates to the back of the building. We're also working on the structural revisions. Just today, I was seeing some news about the footings for the building. So getting everything taken care of for that so that we can got the bid here soon. And also, the demo was successful. And CS Davidson's major involvement there was about the channels in the back, that what we call in the Weinbrunner channel. There was two of them. The big eight-foot section carries the water. So we couldn't demolish that one. But the smaller one, we were able to find out. We did some investigation during the demo period. We found out that we could demo that. So that was successfully done, thankfully, because it's in the way of the new footing of the building. So that was a success. I'm going to give you an update on the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project. Of course, your last two meetings, you talked about some of those things at the square and then that boulevard concept. The boulevard concept wasn't something that was originally presented to Penn not with the scoping. So that needs to go back through Penn not for the scoping phase. And if you know anything about Penn Dot's procedures, you had to get through scoping before you can go to preliminary engineering. Well, here's the good news. They are going to allow us because the overall limits of the project isn't going to change with this boulevard change. So they are going to allow us to start doing some more of that preliminary work with the preliminary engineering phase, which is primarily the surveying. It's a heavy lift with the survey of that entire corridor, all of the deeds that need to be plotted, all the utility investigations, popping manholes and stuff like that. So over the next couple of months, probably next three to four months, that's what we'll be working on. Give you an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 project. I think we finally have light at the end of the tunnel with that project. Most of the CDBG contract is done. Of course, there's some motions on your agenda to that regard. I'll come back to that here in a second. Really, the only primary item we're waiting on is the trees. And we're going to continue to wait on them for probably another month. Just whenever in the heat of the summer, we don't like to plant trees. So we like to wait till, you know, more like August, end of August timeframe for that. The C2P2 contracts also moving along well. They finished the last of the curbs today. And they're going to start paving tomorrow. That paving is going to be at least three weeks until it's all done. So I'm hoping by the time we meet again in a month from now, I'll be able to tell you that all the paving is done and we're down just to punch list items, maybe some line paintings, some signage, those kind of things. So I'm pretty happy with the way everything's finally starting to wrap up there with that project. On your agenda, like I said, is two motions. Good news here is the change order is a significant decrease. And that's primarily because we didn't do those rapid flashing beacons that we had talked about a couple of times. Those were bid as an alternate. We're not going to be doing them now. So that was a significant deduct. This is just an accounting thing. There was two other changes that basically were add deducts and insignificant change to the price. Overall, I think it reduced the price by $150. So the total $86,000 reduction is mainly, again, those rapid flashing beacons that we just didn't build. And then there is a motion for an application for payment. The application for payment is just over $260,000. As you know, that you have a little under that in your CDBG account for use for this project. So this will spend all of your CDBG money, this application for payment. And then we are still holding 5% of that along with some other things till we finish those trees next month. See, under the subdivision land development plans under review, of course, the big one there is the Gettysburg Station project. We've submitted our comments and had an in-house meeting with the developer. There's still a ton of comments to go through. There'll be more discussion at the planning commission meeting on that project. So I'll wait there to deliberate unless you guys have any questions on that. And then lastly, on the last page, I give you an update on the Shippensburg Physical Therapy Land Development Plan. That's the one, the Gettysburg Physical Therapy on Water Street. We followed up with the developer there. They have a punch list of items. They fixed some sidewalks. They're still working on a parking lot, a couple of miscellaneous items there. So we're staying on top of them. Ultimately, they'll have to dedicate the new decorative streetlights to the Borough Council. So I'll be coming to you guys soon with those dedication documents. I believe that is it unless you guys have any questions for me.
Are there any questions for the engineer? All right. Would anybody care to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, reducing the contract amount by $86,150 from $387,268 to $301,118 for the North Washington Street sidewalks and street scape. Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 CDBG project as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? It's not often we get to make those numbers go down. It's kind of a nice treat. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And our second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number one to Kinsley Construction in the amount of $264,812.30 for the North Washington Street sidewalk and street scape. Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 CDBG project as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any last minute questions for the engineer? All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to the police department and officer in charge. Evans.
Good evening. Counsel should have a copy of my report. So if you guys have any questions about that, please feel free to chime in. First, I want to welcome our newest addition, that'd be full-time Officer Austin Kane. He just graduated the Police Academy on June 23rd, where he earned the Top Shooter Award. His background, he is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, where he was an anti-tank missile gunner. He trained in various countries. He completed the Combat Lifesaver Course and Advanced Tactical Combat Casualty Care Course. He also completed the Advanced School of Leadership Course. And he began his field training with Master Patrol Officer Orth, and he's doing very well. And I believe he just started Phase Two of his field training. And there's a total of three phases. So now he's going to be getting in more of the nitty gritty of the police work. And he's doing a great job so far. So we're excited to have him and welcome aboard. If anybody in the community sees Austin or Officer Kane, please stop and introduce yourself to him. Also, we are excited to announce that our newest cadet, Zachary Saldi, has started the Police Academy on July 7th. So we anticipate him having to start his FDO in about approximately, his field training approximately, I don't know, eight, nine months, maybe eight months, maybe hopefully a little less. So. So a couple of things. We obtained some much-needed equipment for our detective vehicle. We got a new rifle for him to assist in any high-risk stops or anything like that. So he's much more equipped with that. Speaking of like inactive shooter scenarios, myself and Sergeant Prue attended an active shooter tabletop exercise with Wellspan. That was very informative. That was put on by John Williams. He was the Wellspan manager of emergency management over there. So we're kind of building a great relationship between us and the hospital when it comes to emergency operations. A couple of things I want to go over. Since my promotion out of the CID, it kind of left a hole as far as investigations. We're working on trying to fill that role. I know Officer Lardarello has been taking the initiative and handling some of these extra CID cases. And it's kind of putting a burden on our patrol shift only because we're incurring some more overtime. He's got to come in early. He's got to stay a little later to adjust to try to help investigate some of these cases. So he's trying to fill that role. He's also looking to attend a couple of different trainings to kind of increase his knowledge. He's taken a new detective course, a criminal investigator course. He's very excited to try to fill that role when the staffing allows it. So I'm going to be recommending him in the future to fill that role when we're able to. Another, while we're on the topic of investigations, I want to highlight some great police work my guys did. On June 30th, 2025, at 0150 hours, Officer Eric Wenrick observed a silver Jeep on the 100 block of Chambersburg Street. Officer Wenrick ran the vehicle registration through his Pennsylvania law enforcement database, which revealed that the registered owner had an active warrant and was considered to be armed and dangerous. After confirming the owner of the vehicle had an active warrant for terroristic threats, he initiated the traffic stop. The driver, who was the registered owner, was taken into custody without incident. Upon conducting inventory search of the vehicle, a loaded AR-15 rifle and drug paraphernalia were located inside the vehicle. The vehicle was impounded and he obtained a search warrant and it was granted for the search of the vehicle. Upon reviewing the affidavit of probable cause of the arrest warrant for the terroristic threats, Officer Wenrick and Officer Lardarello learned that the subject had made comments about having a pipe bomb. Based on that information, they contacted Pennsylvania State Police Hazardous Device and Explosives Section, and they responded and cleared the vehicle. They located approximately four small explosives, which were collected and secured by the state police. The driver of the vehicle was charged with prohibited offensive weapons, DUI and other related offenses. He was taken out to Adams County Prison. Officer Wenrick and Lardarello did an excellent job in this investigation. They were able to get guns, drugs, explosives off the street and eliminate any threats to public safety. So they did an amazing job. Should be commended for that. Lastly, I just want to point out that our department is going to be doing dedicated traffic and pedestrian enforcement. So we just want to make the community aware that we're going to start doing that. And you're going to see us out there enforcing, you know, higher level enforcement when it comes to pedestrian and vehicle traffic, good violations. So if you guys have any other questions, concerns, please let me know.
It's all excellent. Thank you for an excellent report this month as well. Does anybody have any questions for Sergeant Evans?
I just have a comment.
Hit it.
You mentioned Officer Wenrick and Lardarello. Thank you for coordinating the ride-along that I went on at the end of the month of June, Saturday. So we were out until about 1:00 in the morning. So I was driving with Officer Wenrick and Lardarello was also working that night and Sergeant Prue. And again, I was just very impressed with their professionalism. A lot of confidence in these young guys. And Austin, great to have you. Taught him in eighth grade, so that's kind of cool. American history. So he's a great guy. So I just want to thank you for everything you guys are doing and thank you for your work.
I appreciate it. It's good to hear. It's good to hear they're doing a great job. And they are doing a great job.
Great. And Officer Kane, I do want to extend not just a welcome, but also gratitude. Thanks for taking this position with us. It means the world to our community and we look forward to seeing you blossom as a police officer with us. Thank you. Any other questions for Sergeant Evans? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Takes us to the officer, the manager and the treasurer. We'll start with Ms. Stull.
Okay, you have my report. I'll just highlight, we're wrapping up our pension audit for the State Auditor General's office. So hopefully we'll have that finished by the end of this month. And then I'm just going to point out, we've had over 12 right-to-no requests the month of June, and some of them have been very time-consuming, asking for information for past five years and longer. So it's been taking a lot of work for some of the departments to get these done. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the secretary? Mr. Gable.
June has come and gone, which means we are midway through our fiscal year. So we should always kind of remind ourselves where we are financially. Kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Thistle's comments a little bit ago, talking about parking, this is actually, the graph in front of you is actually pillow tax revenue as reported by destination Gettysburg and the county to us through May. June's numbers for pillow tax have yet to be finalized. But you can see that so far, year-to-date through May, pillow tax is just a little bit above where it had been the previous three years. So tourism remains fairly strong here in Adams County. The other graph I wanted to show you is related to the parking department. These are our parking receipts through May of this year. You can see that we are outpacing our recent years by a little bit, not anything huge. But it is also encouraging that, consistent with pillow tax, these numbers are slightly increased over previous years, which also bodes well for our tourism economy here in the borough. So what does that mean in the general fund? Through May, revenues are about 60% collected. So we're outpacing ourselves a little bit. Usually, we generally have about a little less than 60% collected by this time of the year. So we're doing well there. But the interesting thing is, you go to all of our expenses at the very bottom there. We are only about 47% expended of anticipated expenditures. So year-to-date through the end of May, we're currently running a $908,000 surplus now. We do have a lot of big bills that would come in at the end of the year. We have our big debt balloon payments that are usually due in October. So as of now, we should not rest our laurels on the $900,000 surplus. But we are in a good economic situation there, at least year-to-date. With that, I'll just point out that we do have $2.8 million in the general fund checking account. This is liquid cash. $1.07 million of that is what we call reserves. So we do not use that money for operating expenses unless we have a catastrophic emergency. With that, I will turn it over to the council for questions or we can start talking about motions.
Any questions? All right. We can start going through those motions, please.
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The AC&amp;B Banking, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the AC&amp;B Bank Cooperative Authorization Resolution for approved signers for the Borough of Gettysburg. J. Matthew Moon, council president; Judith R. Butterfield, council vice president; Christopher M. Berger, council member; Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager; and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner William Laffman to be paid from the police pension plan effective June 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. JP Harris.
I'll make a motion to accept the JP Harris Associates LLC Tax Exoneration Report for tax years 2008 through 2014 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. The next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough to enter into an agreement for consulting services with Coleman-McDonough for the performance of an external review and assessment of the operations and the practices, policies and procedures, and other processes relevant to the effective police administration of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize Solicitor to prepare, finalize and publish for intended enactment a proposed ordinance. enactment a proposed ordinance for the purpose of amending Chapter 1, Part 403 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg relative to the qualifications, abilities, administrative duties, and responsibilities of the Chief of Police of the Police Department of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Civil Service, please.
I'll make a motion to...
Go ahead, Patty.
...to authorize the Civil Service Commission to review and to amend the Civil Service rules and regulations of the Borough of Gettysburg with the borough's ordinance relative to the Office of the Chief of Police and the Administration of the Police Department of the Borough of Gettysburg. The Civil Service Commission is requested to subsequently submit the updated and amended rules and regulations to Borough Council for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have three HARB appointments.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 071425 for the purpose of appointing Kim Spitler of PA Municipal Code Alliance, Inc., as a Building Code Official for the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I got a little ahead of myself with the HARB appointments, but this is related to a HARB appointment. Forgive me. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, some HARB appointments.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kim Spitler of PA Municipal Code Alliance to the Gettysburg Historical Architectural Review Board to complete the term of our Clem Malat, expiring in August 2027, and to serve in the capacity of Code Enforcement Officer and Building Inspector as required by Section 11-105(a) of the Historic District Ordinance and the provisions of the Municipal Historic District Law.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Mr. Carr first. Is there any discussion? I just want to say before we vote on this, I'm very grateful to Mr. Spitler for taking on this new role with the borough. And also, if you see him before any of us do, please pass on to Clem a deep gratitude for many, many, many years of high-quality and beneficial cooperation between him and his organization. But Clem in particular has been an extraordinary coworker, so please pass on gratitude there as well. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The reappointment of Mr. Schaefer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gary W. Schaefer, AIA, to the Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board for a five-year term, which will expire in August 2030.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Again, I would express gratitude to Mr. Schaefer for, I won't say how many years, but a number of years of wisdom and knowledge and seemingly ceaseless gifts to the borough of his time. I will personally thank him the next time I see him for his continuing service to the borough.
And his longtime position as Chair on HARB as well.
That's right. Though he does not serve as Chair currently, he has for many, many, many years. He did. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And then our last HARB appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph H. Edgar Jr., RA, to the Gettysburg Design Architecture Review Board for a five-year term, which will expire in August 2030.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to mention that Mr. Edgar has been currently filling an unexpired term, so he has currently been serving on HARB, and actually was Mr. Schaefer's intern many years ago and attended HARB regularly then as well. So I appreciate the service that he's provided in the last two years, completing that unexpired term. So this will be his first term on HARB.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. It takes us to our liaison reports for the evening. We'll start with Ms. Sellers and Main Street Gettysburg.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. A quick update on what's going on in the world of Main Street Gettysburg. So I had mentioned last month that we are applying for Main Street designation through DCED. Two of the things that are required for that is public meetings to discuss publicly our strategic plan for the next 10 years. So those meeting dates have been set. So I'm pleased to announce that July 31st at 6:30 PM, and then again in August on the 28th at 10:00 AM, we chose an evening and a daytime meeting to maybe garner a good audience. And those are going to be hosted at the refectory at Seminary Ridge. We're very thankful for Seminary Ridge for coordinating that public space for us to use. So if anybody has questions, it's certainly open, and we're looking forward to presenting the strategic plan that we have conceptualized at the moment, but certainly getting more public input for, you know, where we're going. On behalf of Mrs. Butterfield, I just want to report that the Steinware bid does not meet in July, so we meet again in August. And so we'll update that later. Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, in June, we were able to host Logan Hoover of Senator McCormick's office, and we did a full walking tour of the project from Lincoln Square all the way to the south gateway. So we are anticipating the Build Grant Awards at some point out of the U.S. Department of Transportation. So it was a good liaison visit, and one that was coordinated with Cozen-O'Connor, which has been a good asset to get that project in front of decision-makers at that level. Two things happening. One is gone, and one is coming for America 250 PA. So June 24th, we met in Racehorse Alley for the first Adams County 250 event. We rededicated the plaque there that showed the location of the James Gettys Tavern, which on June 24th, 250 years ago, gathered the first troops from Adams County that joined the revolution. They marched from here on that date. So it was a terribly hot day, and we had a very short ceremony to commemorate that. But my thanks go out to Public Works and the Parking Department for helping facilitate all the support for that event, as well as Mark Gettys, who is a descendant of Samuel Gettys, who paid for the restoration of the plaque. So if you have not seen it, it is fully restored, and it looks fantastic. So... And so the next America 250 PA is National PA Day, which is this Saturday, July 19th. So we're going to be gathering at Alumni Park across from Mr. Gee's on Baltimore Street. We have a crew of about 20 volunteers that have signed up. My thanks to the Alumni Association, as well as the Garden Club, who are going to help us overhaul Alumni Park. It needs some landscape love. It also needs some paint on the fence, cleaning of the bricks. And a big shout-out to Public Works once again, because Robbie and the guys put two new steel benches there. The benches there had failed, and so we were able to use the grant monies that came in from America 250 PA to facilitate all of this. So if you get a chance to stop by Saturday morning, that's what's going to be happening on Saturday. I'm really excited because it's alumni, it's scouts, it's a nice, a nice variety of community people that are willing to come out. And I have people coming down from Bedford, because they wanted to volunteer somewhere, and they had nothing happening in their community, so they're coming here, which I think is an amazing testament to what Charles said about visitorship and how important that is here. And last two things are on the Gettysburg Welcome Center. Chad, thanks for your report and your update. We're on track for everything. So Wednesday, we go before HARB with the final design plans. And the other thing that was, that came out of the effort that we did with the State Historic Preservation Office was a memorandum of agreement so that we could mitigate the loss of the demolished property. And so one of the ways that we have done that is we developed a wayside walking tour. So we have 50 walking wayside tour markers around the borough. So we've developed a map that is available. It's available online. We also have hard copies. Those have been distributed locally to hotels and restaurants and whatever. But it will take you, you know, on a very long journey of Gettysburg's history. The last marker that will be added will be an explanation of the Weinbrenner Tannery that was at 340 Baltimore Street in 1863, when the battle happened. So that marker is not there yet. Once the Welcome Center is built, it will be added, and that will be number 50. And so that just helps us tell a story that has not been previously told. And we look forward to HARB on Wednesday, and then going out to bid for the project. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from Ms. Sellers? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Chad Allen, Gara?
Just want to highlight one thing that's coming up. July 17th through 20 at the Rec Park, Kingdom of Wonders Circus will be there with shows daily. July 17th through 20 at the Rec Park, Kingdom of Wonders Circus will be there. You can get tickets at their website, thekingdomofwonders.com. The Gettysburg Times has an article on this with some quotes from the producers. Wanted to just highlight, "The 90-minute performance for all ages features jugglers, escape artists, acrobats, contortionists, and more set in the medieval times. The circus does not include clowns or animals, so if you're afraid of clowns or animals, this circus is for you."
Excellent. Anything else from Gara?
Not at this time. They have some camps still going on, and what else did he tell me? They've got some wonderful volunteers. He wants to give a shout... Al Moyer wants to give a shout-out to the Youth Advocate Program for providing some extra assistance in cleaning the park.
That's great. All right. Thank you. GMA, Chris?
Yeah, a couple brief updates. We had our audit review at the June meeting. We had an unmodified audit position, which is the best that you can receive. So that was good. The Interceptor Project, it is moving. We're ready to cross Constitutional Avenue over by the college, so that's moving along. The Old Cemetery Hill Tank was razed last week. Actually went up and checked that out. It was pretty interesting. And the Old Heritage Land Tank will be... It's scheduled to come down in a couple weeks. The Andrews, well, we're still continuing to wait for some permit approvals from the state.
Cool. So did they blow it up, or did they just take it apart piece by piece?
They had... Yeah, they were just kind of ripping the big...
Still might be fun to watch.
Heavy equipment up there. Yeah, it's interesting.
All right. Mayor Freeling, ACBA?
ACBA. ACBA is on break for the summer. Next meeting is September 15th.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Lawson, happy?
Nothing to report this month.
All right. And Chris, anything on the Trail Feasibility Study? All right. You have the other reports in your folder. That will take us to Elected Officials' comments. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say here?
I attended the cutting for the Jenny Wade New Museum. It was the home she was born in. That was very interesting. Also, Lachlan Brown was here from Plainville, Massachusetts. I make a wish, child. His wish was to come to Gettysburg. So we had a proclamation for him, gave him a pen in the town of Gettysburg. He directed the Antebellum Marine Band, and they left him lead a song. It was just very emotional. His parents were happy, and I think it was a good thing for the borough. Excellent. Speaking of happiness, we're getting ready for another Kindness Week. I've been contacted by Kevin Smith, who started this international program. Kindness Week this year will be November 8th through the 15th, and yes, there is some hard work. The Education Committee of the Pennsylvania Workforce Development Board will be meeting July 21st. I'm one of the co-chairs for that committee. So also, everybody get prepared. We're going to have a buddy walk. It's a York and Adams County ARC. I've been contacted. It's going to be at the Rec Park. It's to raise funds for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Adams County. And I brought back good memories, I have to say this. I was talking to the woman, and I said, "You know, I worked with ARC when I was in Harrisburg. I helped develop a game board for children with disabilities." I said, "You should think about that electronically now," and you... It's a project. Technology. So that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any other elected officials? Nope. All right. That'll take us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items appearing on the agenda. We do ask you, limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment? Sir?
Good evening. My name's Wade Lauer. I live at 804 Long Lane. Been a resident of Gettysburg since 1991. I want to give you just a little bit of background on myself so you understand what I'm going to speak of. In January, I retired after 41 years in law enforcement, 30 with the Pennsylvania State Police, retiring as a lieutenant at Chambersburg Station, and 11 years as chief county detective in the District Attorney's Office here in Gettysburg. I've worked closely over those many years of that 41 years, probably three-quarters of it was here in Adams County, working closely with the Police Department here. You have a fine police department. I go back to the time of Russ Potter and Fred Gantz, just to put a few names out there, and many of the intervening chiefs in the interim. I come to you to speak tonight concerning an important decision related to selecting a new Chief of Police for Gettysburg Borough. Through discussions I've had with others, I learned that the process may include a requirement that the Chief of Police have a bachelor's degree. I have a bachelor's degree in criminology. So I come to you asking your consideration as to if this is a necessary requirement. While I understand that this may be a general requirement in many locations, I would ask if this will exclude several very qualified members of the present department from consideration. There are many benefits from including current members in the process, and excluding them will only limit your choices. There's little in holding a bachelor's degree which prepares you for today's leadership roles within law enforcement. Leadership in law enforcement is a learned process, not found in textbooks, but rather through experience and watching other leaders, both good and bad, to recognize how to motivate and communicate effectively with the department, and just as importantly, with the community. A good leader must lead by example, communicate effectively, and just as importantly, listen to the members of the community. While the search should include those persons who express interest from other areas, just as important is including those who are already familiar with the strengths and challenges and unique nature of Gettysburg. There will be a significant learning curve for anyone not from the area to learn these unique characteristics. One of the most important tasks for the new chief will be forming relationships within Adams County law enforcement and the community. That takes time. Law enforcement officers and chiefs are by the very nature cautious in forming these new relationships. There are personnel within the Gettysburg Police Department who have already formed these relationships, and the department and the community could benefit from the ability of the new chief being able to hit the ground running. Failing to include those existing personnels is a possibility for the chief's position for a somewhat arbitrary requirement. Only limits your candidate pool. Law enforcement is presently experiencing great challenges in recruitment. The Pennsylvania State Police has eliminated any college requirements for application, and there is no requirement for college experience either for entry or advancement, including that of commissioned officers. Two of my close colleagues within that department entered without college degrees and retired as a captain and a lieutenant. They were leaders, displayed... They were leaders, displayed common sense, and were effective at communicating with those in the department and in the community. Several local departments have recently hired chiefs from within their department, and those men have my respect and admiration for the job that they are doing. I'm not suggesting that they are not very qualified candidates from other places who could come here and do an exemplary job, but rather suggesting that you also take a close look at what is already in front of you, and not let this requirement be an impediment. In closing, I wish to leave you with a phrase that I took to heart and tried to exemplify in how I perform my duties. Managers do things right, but leaders do the right thing. I'm asking you, the council, to be leaders and ask if this requirement is doing things right or doing the right thing. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I wish you well in your search. I also want to congratulate you on choosing Coleman McDonough to do the review. I'm familiar with him. He is a leader and a good man. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.